The HNA August 26th meeting.
All right, I will call the roll Chair Gupta.
Here.
Vice Chair Faibush.
Here.
Commissioner Edamod is absent. Commissioner Farin.
Here.
Commissioner Fong.
Here.
Commissioner De Muji.
Yes.
Commissioner Nogaz.
Here.
Okay. At this time, we invite members of the public to address the Commission on subjects not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to make a public comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. On the computers, click the reactions button and select raise hand on a mobile device, tap the three dots labeled more and select raise hand. At that time, we will unmute you and call your name. Just remember to state your name for the record before beginning your comment. So do we have any raised hands for public comment for not on the agenda? Yes, Victoria.
Hi, I'm Victoria Fong and I'm a resident of Tiburon. I'd like to take this moment to, as a member of the public, to thank our wonderful reporter Francisco for his coverage of the art world and especially our wonderful commission with Marissa Azalea song. So at this time, I'd like to congratulate him on his recent awards. And I'm sure that, and I love the way he also picked certain artists that he meets in Tiburon and features them and brings a lot of interest for the whole community. So with this, I thank Francisco and the ARC for covering all the works that we do for the community. And as you know, Nora and I, as vice chair and chair, that we honored the ARC as our Heritage Award winner a few years back. So, thank you. My three minutes is up.
All right, next on the agenda is the Chair report.
Okay, well, we have a lot to report from the Chair. We had a very successful Native American culture and arts event day. For those who were in attendance, it was a beautiful afternoon with the support and participation of the DITF and the Tiburon Peninsula Foundation. We put on an amazing show. We had singers, speakers, professional dance troupe that had recently returned from France from a UNESCO-partnered Indigenous Peoples Festival. There were tables with crafts. There were free tacos for the residents with wonderful, refreshing agua fresca. And every chair, at one point, every chair in the place was filled. We probably had over 100 people in attendance for what was a four-hour event. And I want to thank everyone, Nora, Victoria, and Liz, of course, who worked so hard to organize and communicate with all the moving parts. There were quite a few different performers and vendors. Henry Frank, who you'll remember from the Native American show here in the Lower Gallery, the curator, he was there as well. And not only is Mr. Frank an amazing artist, but he's also a very good singer as well. He had a beautiful voice and that was nice that he was there. Eddie Madril of Seawam and his wife and daughter Sarah and Ellie were there as well. And they were just amazing. We had Alicia Retez also, who was a storyteller, who did a wonderful storytelling event with her cornhusk dolls, which were incredibly entertaining and quite beautiful as well. So I want to thank everybody and also, of course, want to thank the residents of Tiburon for coming out. I'm hoping that maybe we will be able to do that again. Maybe with a few different angles and spins next time, so we don't repeat the same thing. But I'd love to have Seawam over again because they were just fantastic. So that was that event. Then we had the very, very nice, warm and welcoming Life is a Garden reception. You can see some of the artwork here is still up. And I believe, Liz, you were instrumental and who else? Victoria, Liz, and yeah, in getting them. And of course, the, and of course, the Rabbi and his wife, who were, who really were the driving force there. And it was great because we got to hear from the caregivers. We also got to hear from some of the artists as well about their experiences in this wonderful art class. And you can see, you know, it's, it was a really wonderful, wonderful event. So thank you all for that as well. Then I don't want to go into my action item, but I will say that I want to give a shout out to the Lodge at Tiburon for helping support Scott Froshauer when he came to visit for one night last week. And he and I met and walked around Tiburon for a few hours, drove and walked to various site locations, and we can go into greater detail there. But, you know, he's a very thoughtful and accommodating person who, you know, I talked about a lot of the different issues involved in his proposal. And we can go into that further when we talk on our action item. And that's, that's pretty much my Chair report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar with just one item, and that is to approve the minutes from the July 22nd, 2025 regular meeting last month. Do we have any public comment about the minutes before the motion is set? I'm seeing none, so we'll move on. So Commissioner Nogaz has moved and Fong seconded. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. First on the agenda for action items is the Native American Arts and Cultural Event, which we just heard about. Unfortunately, the event did go over budget by about $1,000, $1,002. And so I can read a staff report on that for you.
Sure.
I'll just read the summary. The Heritage Arts Commission hosted the Native Arts and Cultural Event on Sunday, August 17th, celebrating the rich Indigenous cultures of the Bay Area with storytelling, dance, music, art, foods, and handle-on activities. The event featured Tiburon residents Eddie Madril and Sarah Madril and members of the Seawam American Indian Dance Troupe, as well as representatives from the Coast Mewoc and other Indigenous artists and musicians. The event was attended by nearly 150 community members, estimated. The total cost of the event was $12,029, exceeding the authorized budget by $1,029. The recommended action is to consider authorizing a budget amendment of $1,002 from the HNA General Operating Fund to cover the overage and ensure all event expenses are fully paid. If you go to the second page of the staff report, the, there's a breakdown of the expense summary and the financial impact. The Heritage Arts Commission has an operating budget of $15,000 for fiscal year 2526, of which $1,362.24 has been spent to date. With the approved $4,000 for the Native Arts and Cultural Event and the additional $1,002 requested for the overage, the remaining operating budget would be $8,632.76. The Commission also maintains a special project fund, which receives commissions and donations from art exhibitions and other special events. The current balance of this fund is $10,270.42. At this time, I'll ask for public comment. Seeing none online or in the room, so Commissioners, go ahead.
Can I ask a question? So I just did some quick math. So I, I thought it was spectacular. It was high quality, every aspect of it. My only concern is that averages out, if there were 100 people, it's $120 per person. So I would just, I think it was so wonderful. I just wish we'd had more people there because then if you have your set costs, because we had, we had a high-quality event, you can average it out. So if you had 200 people there, we're only spending 60 a person. I think we have to be cognizant of trying to serve a greater amount of the public.
Can I, can I speak to that? I think, I agree with you completely. I think part of the issue in this case was that the date kept kind of changing. And clearly, and this is something that I was discussing, I think with Marissa and with, and with Eddie of Seawam, that if we do it again, you know, we'd have a much longer lead time and pick a better date when everybody is here. Because even though it was a gorgeous sunny day in August, clearly, not everyone was back from their holidays and we couldn't engage the school community and as much as we'd like to. And it was really an event, I think, that was geared to everyone, but especially to the schoolchildren in the community, and they were just not there. There were also, I'll add, there's an incredible amount of sporting events for children with tournaments and, you know, games away and travel. And that's also another issue that, you know, it's a whole other universe where, you know, you have to align all these constellations in order to get the perfect kind of date. And clearly, I think it would be helpful if, and I can certainly take this on, to understand better the schedules of the, you know, the Little League and the soccer, Tiburon Peninsula Soccer and all the other games, lacrosse, et cetera, et cetera. So I agree that that was, that was definitely, you know, something.
12,000, correct?
Total.
So the, this event received a $6,000 grant from the DITF via the Town Council. And as a commission over the summer, you guys approved up to $4,000. I applied for a Tiburon Peninsula Foundation grant in the amount of 1,000. So we had $11,000 and unfortunately just tipped over.
Well, I will say that, that, you know, I was rather insistent that the dance performers did not undercharge us. And I feel that it's important that, you know, performers, especially artists, are given their due. And, and so I, we, yes. And then there were other speakers as well who joined that were, you know, it was, it was kind of, because it was so last minute and a little bit rushed, even though it was, even though it was pulled, some of them were, yeah, because some of them traveled for four hours to get here. You know, they traveled from way up north near the Oregon border and, you know, other places. So it was, you know, another one was out, out past Stockton. So it was, you know, quite a journey for them. And, you know, it wasn't a large amount of money, but there was enough people that we had to kind of spread it around a little bit.
I agree with everything that's been said, but I also want to say, because it is such a high-quality performance, and if you think of it, you buy a ticket for $100 for, for, you know, a lot more for Taylor Swift's. But, you know, it's, I think it's a good way to publicize HNA's purpose in working with the community. And I, I think we did as best as we could. And I remember working with Marissa and Liz and Nora with about two weeks' leadway because it was hard to get this wonderful dance troupe to have a date. They were in Europe and all of this. So absolutely agree with everything that's been said. But I also want to emphasize that we want to do programs of the highest caliber. And so with that, I understand we have to pay a little. But is there any possibility, could you break it down a little more? Or is that, how much did we actually pay for the dance troupe? Is that possible to tell us?
Oh, I can, I can send a spreadsheet or make it more public. On the second, I, yeah, I summarized the expenses. The, the sort of quote entertainment, speakers, dancers, and musicians came to about $4,000. Food and beverage was three. And then the event rentals, $3,000. I mean, that's the tables and chairs and.
Yeah, and just from your.
Chairs, tents.
Yeah, the chairs and the rental. I was wondering, from what you have gathered and from all your experience with all these, you know, gatherings, where else could we have been, you know, a little bit more economical?
I think probably with the food and beverage. You know, we, we really scrambled because we really wanted to showcase food as part of the cultural aspect. I mean, at any event, it's great to have food there. And unfortunately, we couldn't get a food truck there in enough time that would sell their own food. And so we, I think that's something that with more planning, we could take that expense way down. And then also, I will say, you know, with my experience handling the invoices from the DITF events, as I help process those for the town, this event is sort of on par with what events cost, the big cultural events like AAPI and Juneteenth and Diwali. It's, it's.
It's about the same.
Yeah. So I think there's definitely some things we could do differently and, and we learned a lot. But I agree with, I talked to the music teacher from Reed School, she, after the event, and she was just so enamored by the whole thing. And I do really feel like maybe setting this later in the year when the kids and the parents, I think, yeah, that'll be more just meaningful and robust.
Yeah, it was a date with, with. Yeah, I mean, we, just to recall, we asked for the public to buy tickets when we did the concert in Hunter Noack.
Yeah, that land.
So we didn't ask even for a donation for this. And I think the quality was extraordinary. I just think it's incumbent on us to try to attract as many people and plan it at a good time and be cognizant that kids are busy. That's, that's their job on weekends to be involved in many things at all at once. So it was beautiful, though. I just wish that more of our community had been, had known about it. So getting that date out there.
A lot of people had plans and.
Yeah, yeah, it's tough when, especially, I think it was like the last weekend of the, before back to school.
Yeah.
So the last hurrah, sorry, go ahead, Nora.
But we feel very fortunate to be able to get, you know, Eddie and all the performers.
He's a Tiburon resident.
Right. And I was going to say, apparently there was an event going on at the hotel downtown, which we had, didn't have on our radar at all. And apparently that was geared towards, sounded like families with children. So that was a big detractor because it's just right down the street. But the other thing was that I think that acknowledgement of Indigenous communities and especially Indigenous people for this area is a long time coming. And so we did it, I think, first class by waiting and having Seawam come and dance. And my feeling, and someone was talking about, if we're going to do this, we're going to do it right. Showing, you know, acknowledging, you know, the contributions, the culture, the beauty of Indigenous people. And I think it was worth every dollar. So.
We just, we don't want it to be our best-kept secret, which thank goodness we have the ARC to help us get the word out. But, and we can put it on our website, all the pictures. I took some pictures. But, yeah, and I, I personally spoke to people who were very excited about it, that were going to the last time it was scheduled, and it was rescheduled, so they couldn't make it. So I know it's, it's something that the community would support.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not planned that way, but it's certainly, you know, a possible option to at least, you know.
So in essence, the HNA is giving, I mean, we want to okay the 1,000. So in essence, we spend 5,000. Okay.
I'll add that also, I think, you know, I mean, these are all sort of learning, you know, we're all on a learning curve. And certainly advertising and promotion is something that, you know, I mean, it's certainly, it's not my strength because it's something, it's an area that I'm just not even, you know, I have no, very little experience. I mean, I, I worked in a PR firm in 1992, you know? So it was a whole different world then. But I think, you know, that is something that we definitely need help on and we need to think about how to kind of, you know, what kind of timing do you need to put on a project? And what are the milestones that you have to hit in order to get the word out? And really kind of get, get, get people to come and realize there's something happening.
But I have to say that we did advertise quite broadly.
We did.
So.
It was just, it was just a short, short notice, that's all.
Yeah, but I think we hit just about every possible, you know, media site that we could hit.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If you guys want to send me your photos, I'll put them on the website for you so you can share them.
And thank you to the ARC for putting us prominently on the front page with Eddie Madril's dance moves. That was great. Yeah.
So unless there are other issues, I would like to move to accept the amendment to the budget and the amount of 1,000. What is it exactly? Two? Okay. Well, that's what I was going to say.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you so much. Next up on the agenda is Public Art Proposal: Word on the Street. We're to receive a report from Chair Gupta on artist Scott Froshauer's recent visit to Tiburon and his ideas for a temporary art installation. I will add that we did receive a presentation from Scott last night that I can share the screen and have up on and we can discuss it. But I'll, I'll wait for Chair Gupta's direction on when he'd like to present that.
Sure. Well, let me just give you a quick summary of Scott's visit. Scott came on, I think, he arrived on Tuesday night and then I met with him on Wednesday morning. And we came to Town Hall and Marissa shared some large maps with us and helped us locate not only the parks, but also the little parklets as well. Parklets, which I was not even aware of really at all. But got to see subsequently when Scott and I then spent about three hours driving from location to location. We first went to the Black East pasture parking lot and we walked from Black East pasture down MacGney to south of Knoll. We rounded south of Knoll, came back. He loved the Portuguese dairy mural. He was very impressed by that. And in fact, as we were approaching it, there were people who were taking pictures of the mural and of the signage there, which is really cool. Then, and we did see the site of the former ponds there as well. I did take him up along the upper trail to the old rail trail there, which he also liked very much. I mean, that was not a, you know, those aren't sites, but I'm just telling you our walk-through. Next, we went to Cypress Hollow Parklet, which was a wonderful spot that I had not known about at all. There were people, kids and some nannies there playing. We then went to Belveron Park, but felt that it's such an enclosed space and it's so in.
Belair or Belveron?
Belveron.
Belveron.
There's another one in Belair.
There is one in Belair. And we, we didn't go to the Belair. We, we, there was one spot that, you know, my kid, my son went to Belair and there was one spot that I thought might be a park that goes up the hill, but it's just a, just a road really. But I felt, you know, we talked about it and decided, looking at the map, that that wasn't really a great spot, the Belair Park. Then, but we did go to the Belveron Parklet as well, which seems to be very difficult to access. And it's surround, really, really kind of surrounded by residential, you know, housing and houses and streets. So we decided to spare people of Belveron so much traffic and that sort of thing. Then we, of course, we did also, we spent quite a bit of time here in Zelinski Park as well, which, you know, he thought was ideal for the placement of the array. The bulk of his work would be placed, he felt should be placed in, at Zelinski. And then we went to Tether Park, which is another parklet that I was not aware of, even though I've gone down that road a million times. My aunt and uncle-in-law live up there. But that also was a wonderful little site, kind of tucked away. In sum, I would say that he, and you can read the detail here on the proposal. In thinking, in fact, even gives some pictures and examples. He's got them, he's got landscape aerial views of where he would put a sign. Yeah, sure. I mean, that might be helpful. But he felt that Zelinski Park would be ideal for an array of his work and that Cypress Hollow Park, Tether Park, and maybe south of the Knoll would also be sites for, you know, his sign art. His, his kind of, yeah, let's see if we can get the, that's, that is, I believe, Cypress Hollow. And you can see on the lower right corner there is an actual photograph of, of a view of part of Cypress Hollow Park. And he really liked the area between the two trees near the fence at the back of the park. So it's very discreetly placed. It's something that is almost even hidden, that is meant for people to kind of discover and say, oh, what's that? That's interesting. What is that? So that's kind of his, his modus operandi when it comes to some of these public spots like Cypress Hollow Park. Same goes for Tether. I don't know if you can get to Tether. There is Tether. And you can see the X there is in the park. It's that little triangle right there, that's the park. And he liked the stone and that spot right there where the cursor is, right there. Again, kind of, you know, not, not at the beginning, at the entrance of the park, not at the road, not on the path, but sort of just tucked away, hidden in there. And at South of Knoll, south of Knoll, he liked the idea. He really was taken by the undulating kind of hillocks at South of Knoll, yeah. And he was very cognizant of the fact that people love their views. So rather than place a sign right at the edge of the water, where no matter where you are, you would see the sign, he thought it might be interesting to put it either, you know, in a, in a, in a, in a, in a little bit of a valley or on one of the slopes of those hills that are there. And you can always walk in front of it and enjoy your view or look another direction and enjoy your view. But it won't be so obtrusive as no matter where you are, it's in your face. So he was very, very much aware of that. That's the one at South of Knoll. He felt that, you know, Blackies and the ponds were okay, but he wasn't really interested in adding his work to what's already there, which is quite a few other signs and structures. Yeah. So that's really it. The array would be, the main, the main attraction would be. The array would be, the main, the main attraction would be here at Zelinski. I think that's right there. Yep. And well, we can talk about that. I mean, we can, you know, if we feel that, you know, I did, we did discuss it a little bit. I mean, he, he has it in the middle now. And again, it's not, it's not, you know, that circle is a large circle, but the actual cluster may or may not be that big. But in, in any case, you are still, it'll actually cast some shade and you can still sit inside the circle or next to a sign or outside the circle as well. You can't play cricket in the park, but it's there. You can still use it, enjoy it, picnic there. No, no, that's south of Noel is, 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 that's the bike path there. Can you?
Thomas Jackson.
Yeah, it's kind of exactly near. It's, it's a little, it's a little behind the Thomas Jackson array. You know, it's a little behind further, because Thomas Jackson was kind of.
Closer to the.
Close.
Jackson was closer to the water.
To the water, kind of.
On the rise.
Yeah, exactly. There's the bay and then, you know, that bike path leads to the, the Portuguese dairy mural. Yeah, which is right off the map there. Yeah, exactly. So it would be south of the Noel, Cypress Hollow Park, Tether Park, and then Zelinski being the main attraction. And his idea is also that you can, he, what he likes to do is he puts a QR code there on the ground in front of his work. So you can learn a little bit more about it. It would lead to a map, which he does all by himself, a digital map. And you can then walk to or, you know, bike to or drive to the other sites. You, you, yeah, depending on where you are, depending on where you are, if you are on the upper, on the, on the actual paved bike path, you probably would. I don't know if you were walking along the, the waterside, whether or not you would be able to see the sign as easily. You might see maybe the top of the sign. I don't know. Yes. Yeah. But these are all, you know, I think everybody has this document now. You're welcome to go and visit these spots and see for yourself. And, 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 and again, there's, this is not an action item here today. It's a discussion item, which leaves us a whole month to go for, and see for ourselves where he wants to place them. You know, I think I was pretty, pretty precise describing Cypress Hollow by the two trees in the back there. And, and that wouldn't disturb the house on the other side of the fence either, because they probably wouldn't be able to see it anyways because of the trees. Yes. And then the Tether Park, again, is quite off the beaten track. And, you know, it's a small park. There, these are parklets. They're not grand vistas. You're not seeing a sign that's sticking up out of Mount Tam or the Golden Gate Bridge. And that's really where we left it. I mean, he also said, I don't know if this is in, I didn't read the full proposal. I skimmed it the other day because as it says, it is late mail. It came on Monday. But he also said that to defray costs, he is willing to offer up the signs at the end of the installation, whether, if it's a, you know, it can be whatever amount of time we want it to be. You know, it can be four months, it can be six months. He said at the end of the term, he would be willing to put up all the signs for sale. So anybody who wanted one could buy it. And the town and, 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 you know, we would, we would find some arrangement between the two of us because there's no, he doesn't have any representation. His multiple galleries sell his work. So he has no, there's no one competing, you know, person for a commission. So it would just be the artist and ourselves and we could work out an arrangement where we could also take a commission from that sale.
So we're just discussing the possibilities. And I'm no artist, but just my initial feeling. I think all that writing, I love Lao Tzu as a poet, but I kind of think that's too many signs for the small area of Tether Park. But, you know, that's, that's his artistic choice, but that's my reaction. So.
You mean the, the vertical sign?
Yes, way too many. I would like to have a place where I could sit down and really contemplate on this nice poem. You know, if you have, whereas Tethers is, you kind of walk by and it's really a small area. But anyway, that's just my initial reaction. I think the idea of six months that he, you know, proposed might be a little better. And more importantly, I'd like the commission to discuss some of the comments that we, we have from the public and to see how we want to go forward with this.
Sure. Well, let me, let me take on one thing first. I know, I know Francisco was copied on this, but I did send a letter to the editor responding to some of the letters that were received by the ARC explaining, at least from my perspective as the chair of the commission, I wasn't speaking for the entire commission, of course, but I was explaining my, my position about acknowledging, first of all, that not all public art is pleasing to everyone. But I also did, you know, because my background is the art world, it's the art market and academic as well, as a graduate of, in, in art history, graduate degrees in art history. I did draw upon my understanding of contemporary art. And I don't know if that letter is going to be published or not, or it was. Maybe it's going to be published in the next thing or not. Can you speak to that?
Hi, Francisco Martinez, the ARC typically, when it comes to letters to the editor as it pertains to subject matters covered, we typically do not publish letters from people who may be involved in the story itself. So if Arjun, you were to submit a letter about, I don't know, pickleball, for instance, that would be published, but because this is you, you know, being a member of the Heritage Arts Commission, you know, we can't publish that letter because you have a say in this. However, that letter, I mean, assume, you know, the intent was for it to be public and obviously you're kind of restating what you were saying. So, I mean, this would be included in the context of the broader reporting, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, no, just one of the, just one of the.
I understand that.
Of course.
I mean, I guess, you know, I would hope that there would be some way to respond to public response, you know, to, to a specific slice of public opinion.
Yeah, no, and I think, and this, and I would consider this to be the avenue, I guess, of what you're saying right now would be included in the future story.
I'm happy to read the letter if anybody wants to hear it. It's only 300 words.
This is my next question, yes.
Would we put it on our website?
The letter?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
I would like to have it read into record.
Oh, and I forgot to mention that letter itself could also be used, you know, like within the context of that reporting, even if it's not included as a letter to the editor, but, but, you know, passages that you submitted could, you know, can be used as a, as part of the wider story. So, so the response will be included, just not as a letter to the editor. But by all means, happy to also have you read it out into the public and also just happy to just use the included letter. Thanks.
It'll become part of the public record now when you read it.
Okay, well, it's, it's, it's going to take me a minute.
Well, I, I would just want to say that it is, as you stated, it is your opinion.
Exactly. And the title, and the title, the title, Nora, the title is "My Statement on the Word of the Street, Word on the Street: Public Art Proposal." "As Chair of the Tiburon Heritage and Arts Commission, I understand that the experience of public art is subjective and that not all works will please all audiences. I also think we can agree that art functions as a means of expression and communication that can play a role in reflecting and shaping cultural and social perspectives. Contemporary art often places less emphasis on beauty and aesthetic appeal while focusing on eliciting a response in the viewer. As Chair, I'm interested in public art that can surprise and encourage reflection." And the reasoning, and that is the reasoning, and this is the reasoning behind my advocacy for Scott Froschauer's Word on the Street, "A series of recontextualized street signs with positive messages intended as surprising and thought-provoking art for all ages. From an art historical and critical perspective, Froschauer's work is a subversive play on a common feature of our daily existence, street signs, and concerns the field of semiotics, the study of signs and symbols and their use or interpretation. According to the artist, quote, "The main idea behind that has always been to reflect the alienating messages of advert, to offset the alienating messages of advertising and to place constructive and positive messages in our culture where there is a vacuum. I like to imagine that people might walk past a sign and assume that it is just a typical mundane warning until that moment they recognize it." Sorry, I don't have my glasses on. They recognize it as out of the ordinary. Hopefully, that moment might lead viewers to wonder if other pieces might be hidden anywhere in their daily lives. In this way, the work aims to change how the viewer interacts with the world at large. This work has been positively received in many cities and locations, including Los Angeles, West Hollywood, Glendale, Laguna Beach, Palm Springs, Sacramento, Houston, Deland, Florida, Wichita Falls, Wichita Falls, Texas, and Toronto, Canada, among others. And then I, I did ask if anybody wants to learn more about this proposed public art project, ask questions, or voice their opinions. They're invited to attend our meeting here today, August 26th. That's it. So, discussion.
So I, I am sure that there are places where this would be perfect. In fact, in looking at the pictures, especially the proposed signs and the format that he wants to put them in Zelinski, I think Burning Man is a great place for them because Burning Man is essentially an art happening. And so people, you know, at Burning Man obviously love taking pictures. And I think if you look at the vast expanse of the area where he's got these, the circular presentation, I think it's perfect. But I don't think it's perfect in Zelinski Park for a number of reasons. One, because I think it's too big for that area and because it's a park right next to the library and I see children playing there all the time. So I don't want, and this is maybe just my lawyer head, people, little kids running into signposts that are in a circle like candles on a picnic, on a, on a birthday cake in the middle of the park. And that park gets used for multiple things. So to monopolize it for six months or a year with a circle of signs that are embedded in concrete or in another, and even if it's not concrete, they are there to stay there and not move. I think it's risky, number one, and I think it's inappropriate. And as far as the one that is proposed for the Cypress Hollow, I mean, going in terms of who is going to see it, I just don't know that it's going to get much visibility because every time I've been up there and I live in Bel Air, it's mostly nannies and little babies that are up there. And in terms of the one for, again, the south of the Noel Park, that's a place where whether they're supposed to or not, people are running their dogs. So I don't think that's an appropriate place for it either. So, you know, and then I guess the other one is the one in Tether Park. I, I agree. I think, and I, I also, you know, love the meaning. It's too many signs. So I think that it, it's not to in any way denigrate the quality of his work and the fact that it could be thought-provoking and inspirational in some cases. It's just of all the things that he proposed, I don't see that it's worth $20,000 to put him here. At least not where he thinks they're going to go or where he'd like to see them go. What I just said was that in the areas that he has proposed that these signs go, I don't think any one of them is worth an investment of $20,000 to put them where he wants to put them. No, 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 that's, he's, it's a proposal with a number of signs. He's picked out the locations. He's picked out what he wants to put there. And he wants to charge us $20,000 to do that. This is a proposal. This is a proposal that he's put out at our request when we said we'd like to know where the signs are going to go, what it's going to cost and what you want to put up. This is it.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things is that, yeah. Oh, you're not on? No. Maybe we could use that one?
Anyway, I don't know if this is a. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's good, yes. I think it's a, maybe you would want to see that in the park. They are not placed somewhere that, you know, it's sort of, it would be enough space for the children. But I don't see that. Why it would sort of, it would, there would not be enough space for the other, for the children to play? Is that what you said?
And the costing is for the cost of what he wants to do and where he wants to do it, I don't see it as making sense in this community. That is a park that multiple people use at different times. So for us essentially to monopolize it for six months to.
Why monopolize it? It's just a.
Because, because again, you've got to remember, these are not, this is not, you know, a piece of fabric that is blowing in the wind that you could step on and trip over. This is a street sign. It is made to specifications, just like the street signs you find up and down the highway.
Yeah.
So you're going to put a circle of them in the middle of Zelinski Park, which is adjacent to the library, which is used for all kinds of events, not just hubs.
So Nora, are you saying that we need to have public art of material that can withstand a child's play? Is that, is that your point here? I'm not understanding what you're saying here.
No, no, what I'm saying is.
Because you compared it to Thomas Jackson's array of 750, you know, fabric pieces swaying in the wind with, with little stakes in the ground.
Right, exactly.
And that was okay because you can knock those over. But this is not okay because you might bang into it?
I'm saying two things. One is that I think that it is a public hazard because children play in that park and you've got a circle of signposts in a circle, right in the middle of a park.
I mean, I, as, as, as a father of two young kids, I would say that I could see my kids basically holding on to each thing and then swinging from one to the other to the other and playing with that array.
But my second concern, because I have little kids and I know they like to climb on things and I don't, you know, whatever, but not little, I have grandchildren. But the other thing is that to put them there, they're there for, they're permanent installations until they're removed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that is a park that's used by different organizations for different events. So for instance, we just used it for our event and the week before it was used by the rabbi for the Jewish event. So essentially, we're going to take over that space with that installation for a period of at least six months.
Would you, would you, would it be more acceptable to you if he moved it from the center of the park to the edge of the green?
Yeah.
Yeah, possibly, yeah, but certainly not in the middle.
I was gonna suggest that this Tether Park sign be a great switch for the Zelensky Park because there are all those benches. So it gives an opportunity for people to sit. We see a lot of people walking their dogs. I agree with Nora that it's an event space and there's a lot of children that play there, that it would be hazardous for a circle. But I live right near Bel Air Field and that field is very neglected by the town, yet it's used as a community space and a school space. And so urging him to maybe look at that as an option, even in, like, the corner of that, of that park, because there are children that play there, but it's also this, the kind of secret hidden garden place that if it was off to a side in a corner, would be a great photo opportunity.
I mean, I think the hidden part, though, also, uh, you know, raises Nora's point about, you know, the, uh, you know, visibility and, and how that correlates to the investment. Um, but, you know, that's certainly noted.
But I don't think we can have any other artist that would show and it would cost less. Twenty thousand is not a lot for a public art in several places.
That's true.
Where would you find, I mean, which artists you have in mind?
Again, I'm just dealing with the facts. This is the proposal. This is what he wants to do. And I've already told you my objections to it, and apparently there are other people--
Okay, you have a point.
It's not a matter of being against contemporary art. It's a matter of this installation, as it's proposed, for the amount of money does not make sense.
To me, it makes--
So, may I just ask a question? So is it the money that's more important or the actual installation location? That's a more--
Exactly. What is your--
It's both. Like I, it's essentially what Kushner Karen said, is if you're gonna take something and spend $20,000, you want to get some utility out of it, right? You want people to see it and you want to put it in a place where it makes sense. The proposal, from my perspective, does not make sense to put the installation in the places where he wants to put it. Therefore, he's got to either pare it down and pare down the price or figure out a different place to put it.
Can I just comment on that since my name was invoked? Again, I, I think that's incumbent on us to figure out where can we put it where people can discover it? Can we pare down the price so that it's not so, you know, like overwhelming that we spent $20,000 on that? If, is there a way to get it down? And I love the creativity that he could, we could sell the signs, you know, and there's different themes we could do, but I think we really need to be thoughtful in these days when prices, there's a concern about pricing, how we spend the money. And then I'm, I'm just curious, within our context, as Azita said, is there a lot, how deep are our pockets for other art? Like, is this it? I don't know how much more we have.
We have about $50,000 that was given.
Very unlikely you find that artist for public--
I sort of agree on the Zelensky-- you know, I do agree on the Zelensky Park and I've already given my, I don't want it in the center, I think. I think there are a lot of, if we could think of someplace where people walk toward the park and the parking lots that we could see these signs. I think the main purpose of this art, I think, has already done some good. It got the community speaking to each other and about this issue. And I think is, is part of the purpose of art is to have reaction and having, you know, share the expression. But neither here or there, but I agree, not in the center of the Zelensky Park. And I, um, and I thought, you know, the small sign at the Cypress Hollow, that's kind of intriguing. You go toward the back and you kind of discover something. So I, you know, I, I really like to know, are we addressing the part where somebody wrote the letters saying that they don't want to be, have it installed in cement? Is there any other way of, of installation without the cement? I don't know.
The, the idea that the installation or deinstallation is problematic is simply not a fact.
Okay.
Yeah, he said he could install all of them in a day.
Okay.
So you don't have to do an array of cement. I think the larger issue here is, though, that, you know, I'm, and I want to be cognizant of the fact that there, you know, is a, is certainly a sentiment, not only about the price and about, you know, what we're getting for the price. Because there are thousands of artists that we could choose from probably, right? If we wanted to, and if, we just need to do a little bit more research. So I'm not, I, I feel like, you know, I would rather that the commission feel, as we did with Thomas Jackson, which also had some serious obstacles. I mean, I think, you know, the usage of South of Knoll was not an easy thing to overcome also in the sense that while there wasn't, there may not have been as much publicity at that time. I don't know if Francisco, you were here at that time. So there probably wasn't as much coverage of our meetings back then. But certainly, um, you know, we never got really any public response prior to taking it out to parks, open space and trails and to the town. Uh, in fact, nobody was talking about it except for in my neighborhood at Del Mar, where I had contacted the Del Mar Association and I got one negative response about it. The people at Hawthorne Terrace were all for it and they live right there. So I feel like it's important to remember that what people are, you know, are, are willing to A, tolerate or B, embrace is something that we can't really know in advance. While we might know, we might know some things about the town and the residents and the place, we can't make sweeping statements or generalizations about what is and isn't--
Good art.
Good art or tolerated here. That said, I'll go back to my initial statement, which is I think it's really important that all the commissioners feel, you know, at least warm towards the project, if not enthusiastic about it. So I'm willing to, you know, uh, give this another month for everyone to think about. In the interim, I'm happy to spend a little bit of time, what time I have, to, to see if there are other artists that we can consider for a public art project. I will say that whatever the public art project is, we, I think, at least I have quickly realized that there are only limited places where we can place public art in Tiburon.
Yes.
And those, and we've really hit all the places and we can't keep going back to South of the Knoll again and again and again for a large array or something that's got real bang to it. Nor can we use McKegney Field for, I mean, you know, we can use it for a one-off like we did with, you know, Landscape, but that's it. In a Landscape was one day. So the other areas and the other places are, are quite limited. Again, there are other things that one might do. There might be public areas like a wall or something where one could put a mural up for a limited amount of time. But I'm betting you right now, if the idea of a mural, you know, got out, there would be a lot of responses to that as well, about style--
It did one.
About intent, about subject matter, about style, about all sorts of things.
I think you're really right about, you know, whether we really love it or not. And I think part of this is just the position of the items. We think of people calling it signs because it's so utilitarian. It's not art. It's ugly. We, we don't like signs because it tells you what to do and what not to do. But by the same token, he's able to transform this kind of utilitarian sign into something that would evoke emotions or expressions and to share with your friends or your enemies or, you know--
Or, or on Instagram. But I will say, we don't, we might not like, we might not like signs, but we rely on them and we need them and they are critical, essential to our well-being and safety.
I think that--
I think that's part of being, offering to the community something different for us to learn because we are very, you know, sophisticated community. And it's kind of interesting. I mean, I've said it before, I'm not crazy about the signs, but, you know, it made you go to the next step and think about it and to share it with other people. I mean, we both said we didn't like the signs at Tether Park, but, you know--
I mean-- Yeah, I, I totally hear you. And I will say also, it's not, uh, it's not a 20-foot, 50-foot-long Richard Sarah, Corten Steel, rusted wall that we're putting up anywhere either. So, I mean, if you want to go the route of contemporary art, you're gonna have to take some risks. That's my, that's my, that's my feeling.
I mean--
If you want to stick with pretty pictures, then don't do any contemporary art and we'll just, you know, stick with what we have in the gallery.
Piece of Monet.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so I, I mean, I think, so to, to basically to, you know, kind of bring this to conclusion, unless there are any other comments, I mean, I think, let's leave it for a month. We'll revisit it and we'll use, we'll revisit it as an action item, whether or not we want to move forward with it. I'll go back to Scott and talk, and give him the feedback that he, that, you know--
About the locations.
About locations and about the arrays and this and that.
Prices.
And the price. He, he's willing to go for $15,000 also for a smaller. I mean, the, the prices he quoted were 15, 20 and 25 and he got, he started right in the middle. And, and, and I think, I think Azita's point is a good one also, is that no matter what artist you bring here, you're gonna end up paying at least $15,000 to $20,000. Because, because a work that's hung on the wall, worked by, by a, 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 an accomplished artist that's hung on the wall would probably go for around that amount anyways.
Yeah.
And I say that as somebody who is a professional in the art market and deals with pricing all the time.
One point, or, go ahead, Liz.
Oh, just really quickly, thinking through this, I like the idea of these, um, these, some of these signs being hidden as a way to explore areas of Tiburon. You mentioned you'd never been to Cypress Hollow before, but I, I raised my children in that park. So, and I think the Parks and Rec Group, who's rethinking through the master plan, is getting a lot of the similar feedback from residents, like, we didn't know that the Belveron Mini Park existed. And so while there's no other signage that exists, this is a way to explore the town. Hippie Tree is also something that you have to discover through a path that's not easily accessible. So I think this would be really interesting.
But there's a tension there, there's a tension there between hidden and public, between, do you invest in something that is hidden or do you want to invest in something that--
We still want to use the word hidden. This is just--
Discoverable, discoverable.
I just say, yeah.
Public.
I think that's, there's a tension there, though, I think we can all recognize, right? In terms of like, do you want a big bang and say, this is what we spent the 15 grand or 20 grand on? Or is it okay, are you comfortable with something that is discoverable?
But--
There is, absolutely.
Like the West Village around NYU, like, there's a Picasso right at NYU that you don't even know that exists until you actually walk by it.
You have to dis--
Or all the, the swimming pools in the West Village painted by Keith Haring, um, that are these unique pieces of art that if you don't walk by it or live in the neighborhood, you might not know exists, so.
And in terms of marketing, I'm sure the retailers would love to emphasize these nice little areas and maybe we could get their support. But I think I, I agree with everyone's ideas here, share. And I just want to have us pay attention to what the public are, quote, concerned with. So I think it's the installation with cement and calling them signs when they're pieces of art.
Yeah, the, the cement is a non-issue.
Yeah, I just want to make one more comment, and I do love, before I give my comment, that we, the brainstorming that was just going on, like a path of discovery, there could be a theme to it. There could be a whole, but it's sort of a strategy, like, this is our goal. We want our, our community to discover secret, hidden, wonderful places, or just wonderful places. They're not that hidden. We could do a map and so forth. But just back to the point of the expense, I don't believe we spent a lot on the Portuguese exhibit. I believe that was underwritten and the art was created and donated. So you can create something perpetual that builds on our heritage and art and is for the entire community. And I walk by there today and I see people snapping pictures. It's, it's like iconic, it checks all the boxes. The Thomas Jackson, I was not a big fan in the beginning. I couldn't envision it. I went there almost every day and people were just enamored, every day. And then I had to go away on vacation and I was sad because I wouldn't be around it. But it was, it was something that was special, that was fresh, that could never exist again, that was created just for our community and they got to enjoy it a lot. So I think those are like, striking the, the iconic, you know, the experience of, of the music in the park. So like creating an experience that's unique, it checks all the boxes. I think that's our North Star. And if we could do that with this or with something else, I don't think we have to limit ourselves. I know we're anxious to get started, but we just have to be really thoughtful because everything we've been doing since I've been a part has been really amazing.
Well, if I may say, you know, that the mural, it was paid, a lot of it, by the embassy and people that, they, they sponsored it. That was the case. But anything you want to put in the town, of course, it would cost, $20,000 is very reasonable.
And also, that's a permanent installation. The, the mural is permanent.
It was sponsored and it had some value in terms of, they, they cared to pay because it was the Portuguese background and so on. It's a different case.
Is it, is it different--
This is contemporary art.
And a different purpose at that time. That's part of heritage and to be there permanently. This is an experimental period.
I mean, there's also--
Six months, for three months.
This is just to show--
And I'd love the idea that he would create the QR code with a map for us to learn about, and, um, learn about town. And also, it could be a fun game for children, like finding the Pokemon, some years ago. And, you know, if you find a sign or, you know, but anyway--
It's nice that it's a different, it's a sort of a different and fresh type of art. And that is the whole idea to, sort of, to, so that people can experience that here. Otherwise, the same thing, another mural--
I mean, I think, I think Azita's point is a good one in the sense, and this is how I see it as well, is that I'm not here to represent a Tiburon style. I'm not here, I, I don't feel that it's incumbent upon us as a commission to create, uh, you know, I mean, we all like blockbusters. I agree, you know? If I could do a blockbuster every year or something, that would be amazing. But I don't know if that's a possibility. And, and I think it's more about creating a cultural milieu in which you are a thinking person, you're thinking, you're reacting, you're feeling. And, you know, I mean, there's gonna be some works that are, uh, uh, you know, immediately, people get it immediately and they love it immediately. And that, and that is, you know, one, one, certainly one part of public art. Another part of public art is maybe a, a little more subtle, a little more, uh, intellectual and not as emotive necessarily always. And, and that's also another part of public art and it certainly is one, one reason why public art can be very controversial as well. I mean, you know, there's, in any city, you can find a work of art that has some degree of controversy around it and, and where people feel like, well, it's not us. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not interested in representing an idea of us as much as an idea of place in the sense that this is a place where you can come and find interesting, engaging and different and often original works of art.
I think so.
That's it.
Yes.
Let's open it up to public comment.
We have a couple of attendees. If anybody would like to make a public comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature on your Zoom.
Can we see them or hear them?
Seeing none.
Okay.
This is actually an action item and the action is to authorize-- and the action is to authorize you to go back to Scott and ask him to continue to refine the presentation based on this feedback. Um, so if that's something you'd like to take action on, and then this is a two-part action item where there's an authorization of his expense as well.
Well, the expense, oh, oh.
With the first one.
The expense for the project?
No, for the, uh, his lodging.
Oh, his lodging came to eighty-four dollars.
Okay. To approve the reimbursement of eighty-four dollars and 15 cents from our operating fund to the artists for the expenses during his visit to Tiburon.
Second.
And I'll enfever?
Aye.
Thank you. That's, and so passed. So, and now for the first one, if you'd like to not take action, you can do that as well or you can.
Well, I think, uh, let's, I move that we, uh, take the totality of the feedback uh, and um, the suggestions about placement and uh, and uh, ideas around discoverability back to Scott and ask that he, if he's willing to, um, A, revise the project, uh, proposal accordingly and B, uh, pare down the cost to maybe the lower number that he had originally, uh, which is one of the original three options of 15,000 dollars. So, uh, that's my motion.
Second.
For this, I'll take a roll call vote. Chair Gupta?
Yes.
Vice Chair Feibisch?
Yes.
Commissioner Farin?
Yes.
Commissioner Fong? Commissioner De Muhica?
Yes.
Commissioner Nogaz? Yes. Okay. All unanimously passed. Thank you. All right. Uh, calendar dates. Um, Tuesday, September 9th is the artist opening reception for Cedars of Marin here in the Lower Gallery. This is, uh, Commissioner Fong is the liaison to this artist. There's two artists going to be represented. Yeah.
That's all I know.
Uh, there's a nice article in the Arc this week about it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Friday, September 19th at 6 o'clock is the opening reception for Susan B. Katz. She's installing her work on Thursday. Uh, I know it's a Friday, but it was the one date we could figure it all out to make it work for everybody. So I will give someone a key. Um, Tuesday, September 23rd is our next regular meeting at 5:30 here in Council Chambers. And then Sunday, September 28th at 4 o'clock is a landmarks concert, uh, the John Caline Group.
Okay.
And I've also included, um, just an updated artist calendar, exhibition calendar in your packets and online. Um, I've also included a blank calendar for 2026 as it's time to start thinking about that. So, um, upcoming is Jaleh has her exhibit in November. Um, and I have updated some dates on the calendar for her opening reception, when she's gonna hang, when she's gonna take down. Her daughter came to visit and put that all in there. So, um, yeah, start thinking about artists for next year.
Um, I was just wondering if you could clarify on the idea on the banners? Because we had a little problem. I did not know that we are supposed to contact you because I thought once we have decided in the commission, when we're gonna have the, you know, a show that you.
My apologies on that. And that's one.
That's okay. I just want to make sure that we know.
That's why I printed out the blank calendar so that we can get this all squared away. And then, yes, I think it would make it very clean and easy if the commissioner who is overseeing the exhibition reaches out to me directly to schedule the banner or arrange for the banner. Um, that way it doesn't get lost.
So even after.
If you could, please, that would be great.
That we didn't know. We just saw, thought, you know.
I understand.
And the other one is that Mary Sullivan is in marketing and I would like to, for the record, that it is Sunila. Sunila is the curator.
Okay. I'll make that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, we're adjourned.